Good evening. I would like to call this meeting of the Neighborhood Improvement Services Advisory Committee to order. I would also like to thank our viewing audience for tuning in. And I would like to ask Ms. Marsha Wright if she would lead us in the invocation.
All right. Bow our heads. Dear Lord, we thank you for this day. We thank you for the opportunity to have taken the trip that we did down to Wilmington. We learned a lot, we experienced a lot, and had a great conversation along the way. We thank you for traveling mercies to get us there safely and to return us here to our destination. We hope that everything that we do and say will be pleasing in your sight as we help each other and the community to improve the city of Jacksonville and all who live here. All these things and everything else, we ask in your name. Amen.
Amen.
Let's move on to number four, the adoption of the agenda. Is there a motion to adopt or amend the agenda at this time? Has everyone had an opportunity to review the agenda? Are there any changes or additions to the agenda?
Madam Chair, I believe that we adopt the agenda as written.
Is there a second? Is there a second?
Second.
All right. A motion has been made to adopt or amend the agenda. Any discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. The motion is carried. Approval of the minutes, the minutes. A motion to adopt or amend the minutes is appropriate. Minutes of the October 28th, 2024 meeting have been provided for your review. Has everyone had an opportunity to review the minutes?
Yes.
Are there any changes or additions? If no changes or additions, is there a motion to approve the minutes?
I believe that we approve the minutes of October 28th. With any necessary corrections.
Is there a second?
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. Motion is carried. Thank you. Let's go to livable neighborhoods. Ms. LaShawn Harrison?
Good evening, everyone. As you all know, we did hold the, our first two meetings for the nonprofit funding workshop. We had a total of 14 agencies that came and attended the workshop that are looking for funding with the city. And with that, we also have another opportunity for those that weren't able to attend the meeting, they have a last minute chance to attend on January 16th. That meeting will be held at 10:00 a.m. in the Chamber of Councils. The last chance to come and receive good information on how to apply and what to expect on that grant application process if you want to receive funding from the city for those nonprofit agencies that are interested.
Okay?
Excuse me, ma'am. Those who are requesting funding, they have to...
Yes, they have to attend this meeting. They have to attend this meeting.
Thank you.
Also, we have our nonprofit development training that's coming up. Our development conference will be held on February 5th through February 7th. The first two days will be held this Thursday in City. And then our last day will be on that February 7th here in Chamber Council. Okay? This is where our nonprofit agencies have an opportunity to come out and get some good information on board leadership, how to properly govern their nonprofit agencies, and good information on what to expect as they continue to press forward in their mission with the agencies. Amen.
All right.
I have one quick question.
Yes, ma'am.
Has the agenda been finalized for that training?
No, the agenda has not been finalized as of yet. We're working through that, and as we get closer to it, we put that information out to those agencies.
Because I've been mentioning these dates once we got them.
Okay.
And giving out to a couple of organizations.
But yes, definitely, yes, ma'am.
They were expressing some concern, not concern, a need for...
Oh, okay, for training?
Mm-hmm.
Yes, ma'am.
So I'll go back on what I wrote down and give you a quick break. It's not anything that you probably haven't already been...
Been pushing out, yes.
The main thing was always the intro, because many people are, for the first time, embarking upon membership or service in a nonprofit organization.
So they can register online at the Jacksonville NC.gov website, or they can contact me directly at 938-6546.
Is it?
Registration is okay.
Thank you.
As well as for the nonprofit workshop as well, for those agencies who need to register. Okay?
And just a quick plug, taking the feedback from previous years, this is why it is a three-day conference, because the first day is designed to hit the basics for the nonprofits, and the second day is to hit more advanced topics intermediary. So you can still come both days, because remember that this is a requirement for those agencies that are seeking funding from the city, that they have to have had some formal training. And this is an opportunity for them to get that training complete before the applications are due for the grant cycle. And then the last day is a panel. So the panel has gone through great feedback with legislative updates, so that's why it is a three-day conference this year.
And also, talk about the percentage of each board needs to be present for it to count.
Yeah, so at least 51% of your board has to have gone through training when they're submitting their applications. And key dates, as LaShawn stated, January 16th is the last day for the Funding Opportunity Workshop. But for those nonprofits that have not applied before or just want their applications reviewed, they would have to schedule an appointment on January 22nd. And that allows us to look at their application before they submit it, to see if there's anything that raises any questions. And then they have time to submit their application, time to fix and correct before the submission deadline of February 17th.
There's, is there, there's not a charge for this, is there?
No.
No, ma'am.
All right. So we've completed up to date 175 demolitions. If you remember the old Stevenson's appliance there on 220 South Marine Boulevard, it's no longer there.
It's right across from the Georgetown, right before you get to Georgetown stoplight where McDonald's is, is on the right-hand side. So this is what it did look like.
Yes.
Center block building, and this is what it now looks like.
Right.
That's what it looked like now, right?
Yeah, this is what it looks like now. Yep.
The demolition and the small grant that they get for the demolition is for residential and commercial?
Yes.
So actually, this one is part of our commercial demolition program. So with the commercial demolition program, the owners have to pay into the demolition, and we help cut the cost with the labor. So City will go through and do the labor.
So, I don't know, what would you actually put there? Would you let someone put there? Would this be an empty space?
It's still empty.
You don't want to go by?
And the owner still maintains ownership, so...
The owner still owns that right seat, ma'am.
Yes, the owner does, yes.
So it's just cleared like the ones behind McDonald's?
Yes, ma'am.
Because I saw a tractor trailer parked there when I went by Sunday for church. No, he just probably parked there to get some sleep. He was only waiting for... Because I know Stevenson, they worked on my, up in my house, so he had it a long time with all that junk around there.
Yes. All right, well, this is... Yes, this is a new initiative that we have coming up, our spring refresh. All right, as we get ready to go into the changing seasons, it's a good opportunity for our community members to get some assistance with some minor exterior maintenance to their homes, help with yard cutting, edging the grass, leaf blowing, trimming their bushes and trees, as well as doing some power washing and major, minor, minor, okay? Minor. Trash and debris removal, okay? So definitely those who need the assistance, they can contact me directly at 938-5286 or 6546, 938-6546. And it is by appointment only. It is by appointment only. Okay? And we have four days set up for that, two days, two Saturdays in February, the 8th and the 15th, from 8:00 a.m. to 2:00 p.m. All right? And what you would do is, if you needed assistance with your home, you give me a call, you tell me what it is that you need to have done, I'll come out and take a look. And then we would also, we have volunteer, City volunteers that we're soliciting to come out and join us, so that they can get engaged in their communities, to assist their community members with their homes. All right? So that's February, and then in March, we have the 8th and the 29th.
Are any requirements, preparations?
As far as...
Neighborhoods that can't get it, neighborhoods that can get it? Is it open to everybody?
Anybody within the Jacksonville city limits.
They'll be busy.
Yeah. And those, those that want to volunteer, ages 13 and up. If you are between the ages of 13 and 17, we ask that you do have an adult supervisor with you. Okay? So if you have a youth group, church group, men's youth group, whoever, come out and join us. Those sororities, divine night, they need to get engaged. All right? Come on out.
I will say, I was involved with Ms. Harrison in a similar project.
Yes.
And we had a very little manpower, because I'm very little by myself, but we did have another young man out there, and his son came out. But what I will say, there was a whole lot more woman power out there than manpower. So I do challenge men in our community to get more involved in these type of situations, because this is our community. So when any of us are suffering or can't do things to their community, homes and stuff, we all, you know, we all suffer from it.
Yes.
That's what we need to look at it anyway.
But it's a good opportunity to address those issues, those minor issues around your home as far as maintenance, as well as getting more information as to what other resources are available to you through Neighborhood Improvement Services, i.e. rehabilitation, things of that nature.
So is there a donation for that?
A donation? No, there's no donation.
Just from the city?
Just...
Elderly people?
No, she didn't say elderly people.
Well, anybody who...
Anybody, anybody who needs...
For the community. For the community. Living in the city limits or something.
So as far as donations?
I don't know. Okay. I won't go there.
Okay.
I'm sorry, say if you want to do a donation, then you can. Because after, I remember we did it for New Council.
Yes, ma'am. So for... I would say for donation, donate your time.
It's on the same scale, right?
Yes, I would say for donation, donate your time.
You're talking about the people who get in the services done, do they make donations back?
Yeah.
Okay, that's what she's asking about. No, don't.
It's not required.
It's not required. You don't have to give anything. Just give, give us a call, and we'll set you up an appointment.
Okay. I have some neighbors that could use that program.
Yep, just let LaShawn know, and she'll go out and set it up.
All right.
All right, any other questions for Ms. Harrison? All right, we'll go to community development. Okay. So homeownership, we have been on a move. Earlier, when we spoke, we had 114 and 112 Cox Avenue available for purchase. We have sold 114 Cox Avenue right before Christmas. They closed on the home. And so now we have 112 Cox Avenue that's available. It is three-bedroom, two-bath home, new construction, ready for the low moderate income person to qualify. The sale of the home is right under $195. So that includes the ability that we have partnered with some previous lenders that have been able to tap into additional down payment assistance programs to go on top of the down payment assistance that we have to offer as well. So again, three-bedroom, two-bath home, and this is the final product here.
Is it appropriate to ask the question that I just thought about?
What's that?
Since when the military said, say, for instance, a E4 that died in the military, he has VA pension, a VA certificate, because he did over 90 days. So he doesn't need a down payment assistance or anything like that? Can they...
Yes, so, and the down payment not necessarily meaning towards a loan. Let's say that E4, he qualifies, but he qualified at $160, and he can't find a house. So that now becomes gap financing. And a lot of times, the down payment is also equivalent to gap financing, because we'll take from that $160 and fill in the gap between what we're selling the house for. Now, for timeline purposes, this is where our program has, we own the land, so we built the houses on it, and a opportunity to keep the homes revitalized. The person that's purchasing the home, one of the stipulations is they have to live in the house for at least 10 years. 10 years allows the stabilization to take place. Now, if they do have to leave before the 10 years is up, they're required to...
Not those guys, not the, I'm talking about the guy that has gotten out.
Same thing.
And, you know, now, maybe he's living, maybe he's working for the city.
Mm-hmm, same thing. If he qualifies, then he gets 100. Let's say retired out of the military, 160,000, he's approved for. He's gone around looking, can't find a house. He stumbles on our steps. I won't even say he stumbled, because you brought him to us. So yeah, so you brought him to us, and it's like, Pam, he's been qualified, but we can't find a home. So we'll go through and do our qualifications as well to make sure he meets the HUD and COM guidelines. Once he has met that requirement, we'll go through and approve him in that regard. The lender that approved him for the 160,000 is now going to be looking for that gap financing. So that's where our CDBG down payment assistance funds come in, to help close in those gaps. Once they've been approved, the land they have to live on there for 10 years or more. If they leave less than 10 years, then they have to pay back the cost of the land. The down payment assistance is a deferred loan that they have to pay back, but it's at 0% interest rate. So those are just a few ways that we're able to, and in certain situations, if we have to do more than what we have looked at, we take all that into consideration, because we want to make sure that, one, the house is affordable, making sure that they're going to be able to pay for it over the course of time.
Yes, ma'am. Thank you.
Yes, sir.
Before you move, where is this one located at?
So this is right on Cox Avenue off of Marine Boulevard, right by KFC.
I saw 152. Was that the number on the house?
112.
112?
Yes, ma'am. 112 Cox Avenue.
On Cox Avenue?
Yes, ma'am.
Is it already sold?
No, this one is ready for a buyer. So, and we will be building two more houses on Ann Street, which will be 408 and 410 Ann Street. So construction will be getting started within the next month, hopefully, so that way we can get started, you know, weather pending. But 408, 410 Ann Street is our next homes that we're going to be building on.
Well, what is the asking price for this one?
We're right about $195. I want to say it's $193, but it's $195.
$185?
$95.
That's cheap.
Yes, ma'am. It's not cheap. It is cost-effective.
Really, that's reasonable. Affordable.
For the area, it's affordable, I guess, reasonable. Yeah.
Well, now, if you can give what it is.
It is definitely affordable compared to what's on our current market. And that's what we want to make available, is we know that the current market as it stands privately, there's not a lot of affordable houses for those buyers that are being approved, but they're not able to purchase what's currently out there. So we want to make those opportunities available the best way we can. So it's also, if you know any builders that's looking for opportunities to build within the city of Jacksonville, and they have some affordable options for us, please definitely put us in touch with them, because we're steady trying to build our inventory. All right, one of the requirements to be able to purchase a home within the city of Jacksonville is to go through a homebuyers education course. Our next class that we have is February 1st. It is a Saturday from 8:00 to 5:00 p.m. The cost is $25 per person. That does include the materials and lunches provided. To register for the class, they'll call 910-938-5286. This is also a requirement, if the lender is asking for that buyer to go through Housing Counseling Services, which we are a HUD-approved housing counseling agency. And by doing that, we can do counseling services for anyone, whether they are just getting started to purchase a house, looking at financial management, or they have already purchased a home, and they're running the risk of losing their home, they can come to us for counseling services as well. Then we also have our money management on February 22nd from 9:00 to 1:00. This is a free course, going through financial services, and we've actually done, created a partnership with one of our local banks, that for the last hour, they're going to do a step up from our basics to just give somebody that, if you have your budget under control, you understand your credit, you just want to be prepared for the next services, that's what that 12 to 1:00 will go through. So Marine Federal is going to take care of that for us, but still come out from 9:00 to 1:00. All right, any questions on classes? All right. Our annual action plan, we are in the planning process for fiscal year '25, '26. We have our next community input meeting on January 14th at 6:00 p.m. This will take place at Church of Christ of Roosevelt Drive, 111 Roosevelt Road. And we are doing, for, since we're now in the second half of the year, this will also be not only what we're seeking to plan in our annual action plan, but also given a program performance of where we're currently at in our current fiscal year, so that way those that are providing feedback can see what have we done thus far, what have our agencies completed thus far that have received funding. So this is a checks and balance of where we're currently at.
Can you forward those flyers that you have to each one of us?
Yes, absolutely.
Thank you.
All right. I'm gonna hold this up here for a moment, so that way, as our viewing audience is viewing, this is our needs assessment survey. It is on the website, but also every time that we have an opportunity to be before others, this is a QR code that will take you directly to our survey for the annual action plan. If you have completed the survey, no worries, you can complete it again, because what you thought about in October may be different in January. So please provide feedback for us. Please also share the link with others as well, because this allows us to get that real-time feedback on what needs to go in our annual action plan for '25, '26. And the deadline to submit feedback is February 20th. There is a gift card drawing at the end for those that have submitted, so please, please, please supply your feedback.
And if us, us around the table, if we can be the first guys to go ahead and start putting that in, if nobody else has, so we can lead by example and put our stuff in there at least, you know?
All right, Jacksonville Youth Council, we are meeting this Wednesday, January 8th at 6:00 p.m. It is open to our 8th through 12th grade students. This Wednesday is our officer installation ceremony for the 2025 officers. So if you are available, please come out and join us. Our new officers will be installed by Mayor Phillips, and it'll be 6:00 p.m. on Wednesday, January the 8th. Also with our youth council, they have the Harmony Board, which is going through the process of doing the grant applications for youth organizations. So once that is finalized, then organizations that are primarily comprised of youth will be able to submit their application to do projects within the community as well. So they are operating the, and right in the top right picture, where you can see the four sitting at the table, that's a picture of them actually preparing to do interviews for those organizations that applied for funding. So this is a learning opportunity for them to be able to provide grants and know the same process that our nonprofits go through. They put those youth organizations through the same process as well.
I commend you for those platforms that you use, the kids, you know, they help the children grow.
Thank you.
Wonderful. I like that. Let's go to neighborhood initiatives. Ms. Tracy?
Yes, yes. Good evening, everyone. So glad that you, an audience, has joined us. Just wanted to do a quick recap as far as council initiatives and what we've been doing regarding affordable housing. So in September 2023, council allocated some funds for affordable housing, so that we can develop a housing policy. And what that means is, we wanted to figure out what our needs in this community regarding affordable housing entail. So we did a request for bids for an organization to come in and help us determine what our needs were. And we selected Development Finance Initiative with UNC Chapel Hill. They came in and had several presentations with our city council. The first presentation was a deep dive that explained the terms of what is affordable housing and what is not affordable housing. So they came in and gave a presentation about affordable housing to help council understand what exactly affordable housing is when they have these terms presented to them. The second time that they came, they gave a needs assessment. So after reviewing all of the demographics, after seeing what the current market has, also looking at the effects of the military, that effect have on our community, they gave us an in-depth needs assessment. And I will say that the public viewing audience was receptive to that, because in our community input meetings, we have several people that says they understood the data and the information that DFI presented. And then finally, they came back to council and gave recommendations of what needed to happen as far as development of affordable housing, using the resources, the funding, and any other opportunities that we may have. So with that, they gave single-family assumptions, talking about households that earns 50% AMI, a cottage court kind of concept, which houses ranges between 800 to 1,000 square foot. You all went to a tour today, and I'm going to give you an opportunity to talk about that. But that concept is what DFI also can present it to council. So there is an opportunity to have that concept put onto a city-owned property. That's the total home, it's going to be about 10, and the cost assumption is going to include our budget and other funding opportunities. So we can put our CDBG funds into this concept. So move forward. Where they're talking about is the city owns property off of Court Street. You all remember one of the old Hopkins buildings? So the city owns that, that property. And basically, they were saying that that could be a site for a cottage home village, the same as you all saw today when you all went on your tour. It's got a lot of amenities around it, and, you know, even though it may not score well with affordable housing, with any kind of tax credits, there's still opportunity for the city to invest in this type of concept. Okay? So if you all recall, and I'm so glad that you all went, if you all recall what you saw today, this is the same concept that could go on there, and these are the costs. So if you look at that, you'll see that it is, the total estimated cost is $2 million. Our total gap for our CDBG funding is only $250,000. So we still have to find more money as far as $750,000. That's what council, city management, anyone that, you know, wants to bring this concept and help us bring this concept to, they're going to have to figure this out on how we can get this concept here in Jacksonville. And in our, in our, in our example, we're going to sell these homes. These are not going to be homes where it is for us the Eden Village concept, but we, there's other opportunities for we, for us to bring the Eden Village concept to Jacksonville, but these are going to be... But these are going to be like two bedroom, small homes that's going to help satisfy the single mom with the one, you know, one child or the widow or widower that's coming, you know, wanna move down to Jacksonville and they're, you know, need us some affordable housing opportunities. So, you know, we have that market that's out there. So I think it would be a great opportunity for the city of Jacksonville to invest in this kind, this type of concept. And I think that's it now. Just, do you all have any questions? Do you all have any comments, quick comments of what you saw today and how it could be implemented with the city of Jacksonville? You wanna go around the table? Just name one thing that you saw that was impressive to where we could bring that and you can share that why is it needed here in the city of Jacksonville? So, Ms. Bridget?
Oh, well, I like the concept that I saw today, and I think it would be an excellent idea for Jacksonville. Myself, I have two children here living now, one with a child and one single gentleman that just moved to town. And this would definitely be an eye opener and something to go forward even tonight and tell them about this concept, you know?
Very good. Ms. Gloria?
No, I'm just trying to figure out where is this going?
Okay, do you know where the Hopkins building used to be on Court Street?
Oh, the old Hopkins building, it tore down?
We tore it down.
Area out there?
Yes.
Yeah, that'd be, I was trying to put it in a perfect area where people would like to live.
Yes, ma'am.
Oh, yeah. I could see it reasonable. And they all be two bedrooms?
Yes, ma'am.
So that you wouldn't have to?
Yes, ma'am.
So like if it's two ladies are living together and they have one child, so that would be suffice for them. Yeah, I could see that, very reasonable.
Yep.
First of all, I'd like to thank you all and to organize this trip for us. Like Ms. Gloria said, this was very eye opening and Ms. Teresa. But, and what's, what's the organization?
The Jacksonville, I was trying to tell.
I wanted to.
We're gonna thank the Jacksonville Board of Realtors for sponsoring the trip so that we can attend. Ms. Christina Asbury, she was instrumental in getting the transportation and getting us down there and setting up all of the tours that we went on today.
Don't forget our driver. But anyway, I think this is where first time home buyer ship is gonna start, gonna be going in the future. Cause it can be affordable. It's just a wonderful concept, and I think is, as a council, we can get on, you know, get together, wrap our arms around a project. I have a lot to say about this project, but I'm gonna stop, stop. I feel like, I've been feeling like I was Chicken Little talking about the homeless is coming, homeless is, homeless is coming. So, I mean, cause I've seen, I've seen it up in D C. Come from larger cities and it's grown, the population's growing here. But I think this is a way of, of making sure that you can, we can mitigate it. You know, we won't be, this is a great start. Thank you.
I wanna ask one question before I forget it. Would there be a way that we as a board could get like a survey of people that are really looking to downsize and move into the houses that you, you know, proposing here?
We can create a survey for just about anything.
For us, because there's a lot of people that mention it to us to, you know, when you're out and they'll say, well, I need to get rid of this big house, it's just me by myself. And it goes off the top of your head because they said. But there's a lot of people out there that are really considering because of the way they, the electric bill, everything, the taxes and all that. It's not feasible for one person just to live in.
Well, there may be an opportunity to update our current survey, to add to our survey, and we may be able to add a question like that on there. But yes, most definitely, we can, we can.
That way we can get a start, and I feel for how many people are out there, you know, wishing for the type of things we saw today and what you're bringing in.
Yes, well, we got a needs assessment that we can.
Who wants it?
We got a needs assessment that we can, you know, do a N E S A C in-house workshop, and we can deep dive into the needs assessment so that you all can see exactly what's out there and who needs what type of housing. But we'll, we'll come to that.
Right, but see, that way we can ask the people when we're out there and they tell us, and we just put it down.
Tell them to answer that, tell them to answer that survey. Tell them to answer the survey.
And we bring it back to you, and you do the needs assessment.
Yes, ma'am.
There you go.
Ms. Paula?
So, you know, of all the things that we saw two sites today, and it was just amazing, just thinking about the, put yourself in the place of somebody who doesn't have a place to lay their head. And one of the things that really impressed me when I went to Eden was they had this saying, imagine a city where no one sleeps outside. And they, did you bring it in?
Trying to see if I got it.
Oh, he left it somewhere. Anyway, and they have it on the back of the T shirts. And they, we were gifted T shirts today.
Yes, thank you, Ms. the Home Foundation from Jacksonville Board of Realtors.
They bought those shirts. They gifted all of us with T shirts, and it was just so, that just kinda opened up a whole thing right there. I live downtown and I see homeless people every day, every day, walking back and forth in the park every day. And I wonder, on nights like tonight, where do they go to lay their heads? On evenings like today when hurricanes come and the rains come, when the weather gets like it's gonna get this weekend. So they have to have a place to lay their head and be, be safe and feel safe. And so anything, whatever we can do to help this happen so that it is affordable for someone. I know we say affordable housing, but it doesn't seem the same to me as being affordable for, for someone to be able to afford it. That's a different, that's different to me than affordable housing. I can't explain it any better than that. So it was an amazing, it was an amazing day, even with the rain.
I enjoyed it because one thing about it, when you're looking at this picture, and I know the people who are viewing tonight are seeing a mockup of what, you know, eventually it might look like. But it's quite another thing to actually physically go in and see what you can do with a limited amount of space or even just a finite amount of space. Whatever you're gonna live in, it's only got so much space. And sometimes we don't really think about that issue, you know? But, and also something that grabbed me as I was looking at all these different was the fact that you have to be just ready to, to do something. It's not enough to agonize over it and talk about it for the next hundred years. You have to just make up in your mind that you're going to take this and bite off a piece of it at a time. And there are housing options for everybody, depending on what they can afford and all this kinda thing. But we've gotten to the point where, and not just here, but all over this country, where people who are working hard and trying to do the right thing are just, have been boxed out of the fundamental thing that I know I learned in elementary school, food, clothing, and shelter. That's what they taught us right off the bat. If you didn't have food, clothing, and shelter, you cannot function as a, as a, a human being in this society. And so one of these big things is housing. And there's a market, and I have stopped talking about affordable housing. Quite honestly, I say income based because affordable housing, if you're making a million and a half a year, maybe you can afford a million dollar house. But if you are like a lot of the people in this county are in the service industry, it's difficult for you. People who are in a lot of industries and workplaces in this community cannot afford decent housing. And so I love this because it was an opportunity to see a place where they're doing something. And this is an example. And you don't have to always, you know, reinvent the wheel. Look at what somebody else is doing in a comparable community and see if it can't be transferable. And I think that this could very well be, especially when you already got a location identified. I mean, this is just excellent, you know, to have an opportunity to just, just go on and do it.
Okay, Dr. Brad?
I, I agree basically with everything everybody else have said. And it became real to me because the volunteer work I do, I see it every day. Young people coming in, they got, they have jobs, but they don't have any place to even apply to live. So this would be an opportunity for a starter, starter home for a mother, her kid, you know, it's, it just seems perfect. And to be in the city, so you get the security right here where leads, you know?
All the city amenities.
Yeah, city, yeah.
And the resources that they needed, so as far as transportation.
Absolutely, yes. So I, I think we need to jump on it, like right now.
I hear you.
Well, I am pleased to, to hear that you all support because I know that council, it is one of their initiatives to bring about some affordable housing here in the city of Jacksonville. So this is one way that we have helped them to see how it can be done within the city limits of Jacksonville, and they've been very receptive.
I do have another, I forget, I wanted to bring up Vivo. They repurposed actually an old hotel motel and have made it a community. And basically, they have made it affordable because everything's included, you know? So when we talk about a, a single marine or someone that's coming out, joining the workforce for the first time, being able to go into this place, and it was a thousand dollars in Wilmington, a month. They said they do from the short term lease, from three to sixteen months. But it gives people the opportunity actually to have a place to stay. You know, and won't have to stay with three or four individuals. And this, I see this more for workforce housing, you know? It was a, they had a gym, a swimming pool.
They had their amenities.
Amenities there, it was, it's really a, a nice concept. We have to get more creative going forward when it comes to housing, you know, so.
Yes. And not be afraid to think outside the triangle. Triangle, the box, the rectangle, whatever, cause all of that includes in right here. Oh, and you know what I forgot to mention? They even have a farm at Eden. There's a farm back there with chickens and the eggs. They had, they had a pile of eggs laid, ready to bake, ready? Just, just get the eggs and crops and everything. So it was amazing.
It's Eden Village of Wilmington, and the concept is this is permanent supportive housing. So these people, they can stay there forever. And these are folks who have been chronically homeless, and they may have some health issues, they may have some mental issues, but they have the support there. And their caseworkers come there and meet with them. They also have social workers that come in and meet with them. And on site, they have the support staff that's going to, you know, support what their, their daily living that they do and also allow them to live there with dignity. They earn points, they don't earn money, but they earn, they earn points by doing little chores around the facility. I love it that they have access to get into it with their thumbprint. They can't ever lose a key. So they have access to get in with their thumbprints. And they can pay three hundred dollars and they can live there forever. So these are people who have, you know, some income, some disability income, they have some income, and they're able to pay that three hundred dollars because they're, you know, they're supported. They get a check and they're supported. They also have, which I love this, they also have a chapel, a place where they don't have to worry about what's gonna happen to them at their, end of their life. So they have a chapel there that they can choose to go there at that chapel. And I think, you know, just by having that peace of mind that if they, if they, if you have someone who have no family, then at Eden Village, they know that the end of the story is this is gonna be their final resting place as well. So I think it's a holistic, supportive community. And the fact that you've mentioned the garden and the livestock, well, the chickens and all of that.
For the livestock next time we visit.
It's in the city limits. So I don't think that they're gonna have the livestock, but.
Huge garden.
The, the community garden is, is just, every time I go there, I just wish I could take a, a bag of those, those greens. But they, they grow their own food, they prepare their own food. But they're also organization, we saw where a Greek organization sponsored the laundry room. We saw where, and while, and the other visits that I've been to, we've always gone in the morning and just right before lunch, you will see these other organizations, civic organizations start bringing in their groceries. And they're gonna be going in there and they cook for the residents.
And the big thing, the, the community as well as the, the local government got on board with this project.
Yes, it was, it's a holistic support system for the city, to the county, to private owners, to foundations, to state program. It is a holistic effort, and it is, and it's working. It is working.
And you know, one of the things that he asked us before we all walked in, he said, I can show you one now, take it. He said, before you go in, think about whether you could live this way. And you know, you think about all the ways you were raised and the houses you lived in, traditional stuff like that. He said, but think about that before you go in. And so we, he, we did go in and look around, and then when we came out, he asked us, do you think you could do this? And I think all of us pretty much were sort of saying, absolutely. Because when you really think about the things you really truly do need in your life, the rest of it's gravy. And you know, and the older you get, the more ready you are to cut away there, you know? And when we came out, I think all of us said, absolutely, I could be right here and be very comfortable doing it. And he said, this is what, so once again, seeing it in person was so much more impactful to me than any presentation you could have done.
Yes, ma'am. That's one of the reasons why I wanted to get you all out and just spend a day with N E S A C and to just show you some opportunities so that you all can, you know, come up with some more ideas for affordable housing in your community. So thank you all for joining us. For those who missed it, you missed a good one? But, you know, there are gonna be some more opportunities for, you know, you all to get out and see what's out there. We used to do this, we used to do this a lot with, you know, in the nineties when we were, when we first were, when we first started meeting in the development.
On, on the board of what we're about to do. Could you start, like, I know there's a lot of support out there because I hear it all the time. I would love to volunteer, but I don't, there's nothing for me to volunteer for. Cause I have a couple of friends on Rolling Thunder, and they do volunteer work. And we went to the meeting when I was on my own, saying, they do guard crossing. Jim, he does guard crossing, he was a tactical police. But he said, right down here on Court Street, hold up the sign for the kids across the street. And he said, that's the best thing that he can get out of the house days. He said, at least it gets them out of the house days because they'll retire.
Well, if they go and register with Onslow Volunteer Center, they are, they just go through Onslow, because we.
Volunteer Onslow.
Volunteer Onslow, we go through them, when we asking.
Do downtown?
For anything, for anything. So we go through them, just like we're gonna go through them to get the spring refresh.
We can get them to volunteer to help, you know?
Yeah, if they go to volunteer Onslow.
No, just volunteer Onslow.
Dot org. Dot org. And just, and just, if they, if they wanna volunteer, they can just put in, this is what I wanna volunteer for.
That way we can start itching up our volunteers. Cause he said, volunteer.
You got the spring refresh.
So the Rolling Thunder can come and help us do our spring refresh.
Rolling Thunder does the soup kitchen. They can do so much because they always, their last name is Thunder, Rolling Thunder, they all.
They happen to do on that one Saturday, okay. Let's, let's move on. Just wanted to make sure that you all know, Pam, she brought up the annual action plan for my five year plan. for my five-year plan, we are heavily getting ready to plan that out. But your participation for these community input meetings, our community need to see that our NISAC, they support us.
Can we get some T-shirts this morning?
We got T-shirts coming from the. Community Development Week. You can wear that, you can wear your community from last year to our community input meeting. But it's kind of cold. I mean, it'll be kind of cold, but, you know, but just come on out and just, we, we as staff, we need your support. I'm just gonna say it publicly, we need you all, we need your support so that when we go out, the, the community can see that, you know, we are supported by our community leaders.
Yes ma'am.
That's all I have.
Every three months we'd have a town hall meeting. For all the churches we've been to, all of them can come together and have like one town hall meeting. Wouldn't that be possible?
I think it's something we should talk about offline. We might need to talk about it.
Because I got some.
That may be another opportunity for another. Yeah, it may be another opportunity for another group to, to lead that.
Yeah, we need that.
So do we have any one city, our city, my city moment? I'm assuming that the one that we just went through was probably real good, but do you guys have any others?
I just wanted to report that, as you know, we've talked about this for years because this community, this committee really began our Bayshore Estates initiative. And we have continued to go on from the beginning and we had our holiday celebration, you know, this past December when we met for just food and fellowship and also had to deal with some of the, a couple of the members who had lost relatives, you know, during the course of the year, so got together. But I always share whatever comes out of this with them. So I'll be reporting this information to them and they do watch this broadcast. So, and I told, a couple of them have asked me about serving and I told them that I came on as I think it's a shadow member.
Yes, they have to go through the clerk's office and fill out the application. They can fill it out online and as soon as we have vacancies or anything like that, then, you know, we will.
Oh yes, now as far as membership sitting here, I told them that people attend these meetings just to hear what we're saying and that they cannot have a vote, of course, unless they're an actual.
Oh yes, yes, we do invite them to come in.
They can come on in and it may be to their taste, it may not be, but at least they've been here and looked at some of the things we're trying to do. So a couple of them were very excited because they're getting their hands on some time and they can make available, so. But I think that what we've been doing, talking about here would be very, very good information for them to hear about cleanup. People who are getting older and want to come out of a home that they're already in, there are all kinds of things that could be doing. And I will ask them too, you mentioned earlier about if they know of, or they're in a home, not in a home, but if they know of homes that could be purchased by the city or something like this, you know, or transitioning out, something like this that we would let you know.
Very interesting. And I encourage all of you all who are connected to groups to let them know what we're doing here. Share this information with all of the groups that you all may be interconnected to, especially those neighborhood groups.
Yep, I was gonna say for our one city moment, as we are, we missed our December meeting, so this is a follow-up to it. We want to highlight the holiday parade that took place. So these are just some images from the holiday parade in itself.
Pam!
Go back, go back, go back, okay.
We had the Grinch make way.
We got you.
And then we had Recreation was highlighted Winter Fest, so that was taking place.
Alrighty, thank you.
We used to do that, but it'd be cold.
Future agenda topics, anyone? Any suggestions? Alright, questions and comments?
I would like to talk further about, I don't know if this would be new, but more on the, the first place we went to.
Vivo. Maybe we could even bring them out to you to come to this. Well, I, I thought about it towards a workshop, but let's talk about.
Yeah, let's, let's see if we can also include our local partners like, I know Raquel Painter, she had some interest in, in going, she was supposed to attend, but she was unable to do so today. So, you know, we can, you know, have, invite some of our community partners, you know, to come in and talk about that concept as well.
Okay, great. Alrighty, key dates. January 14th, community input meeting, 6:00 PM.
It's near the DAB.
Oh, okay, I know where it is, yep.
January 16th is very important.
Opportunity workshop, is it also your birthday?
Remember that.
What time is your birthday? Alright, February the 1st, Homebuyer's Education Course. February 8th and 15th, Spring Refresh, appointment only for Spring Refresh. Let's call in, February 5th through 7th, Nonprofit Board Development Conference. February 22nd, Money Management. At Jacksonville Station?
Yeah, I was gonna say before I switch slides, on January 20th, Martin Luther King Observance Day, City Hall is closed, but there's been marketing material that the parade is still gonna take place. So that's at 10:00 AM, they meet out here at City Hall parking lot and they walk down to the old courthouse and back. So if you are available and want to participate in the parade, it's another community opportunity.
Saturday.
It's Monday. Monday, January 20th.
We might need to get some of those flyers out, but it's after that then, maybe for the next one.
Okay, thank you. January 20th is on Monday, MFK Observatory. February 24th is our next, no, is that, is that gonna be our next meeting?
Yes ma'am.
I got the, thinking about the every other month.
Yeah, we're back on schedule.
We're open to be back on schedule then, alrighty. Is there a motion to adjourn? So, record one second. Yes? Our meeting is now adjourned, have a good night, thank you for joining us and Happy New Year!